When we started. All the willpower I've shown. There's goals. A lot of it is. I don't know. But I have a person who can take slides, but. Why don't you do that at nine thirty square? I did.
I will. I will like food that.
It is really. That's why I just wanted to.
Like reach out.
Okay, good morning. It's ten AM. We ask you to please rise if you're able for the open prayer and congratulations before we convene our commissioners public meeting. Heavenly Father, our thoughts and prayers are with the kids and their families. They experienced a horrific evil yesterday morning. We are heartbroken by this tragedy. We cannot comprehend the evil that would allow the suffering of innocent children. We pray for your peace, comfort, and strength. To surround these families in this community in the difficult days ahead. Think about the evil that was present yesterday. Today, we reflect on the man who prayed for peace and equality for all. Father, on this day sixty-two years ago. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Delivered his iconic "I have a dream" speech. It's a call for equality and unity as needed today. We pray for mutual respect, equality, and unity among all people. Pray for our divided nation this morning that we will remember the words and teachings of Dr. King. Father, you have created each one of us in your image, and we are all equal in your eyes. The Lord tomorrow will celebrate the hundred-ninth birthday of the United States Marine War Reserve. It was established by President Willis Wilson due to increased demand for warfighters in World War One. Force began with thirty-five Marines. And now has grown to approximately forty thousand reservists. We honor those that have sacrificed and thank them for their bravery and service. This Monday, we'll celebrate Labor Day. It's a day where we pay tribute to the American worker for their contributions and achievements. We know that you want us to thrive in every aspect of our lives, and you've given us talents, gifts, and tools to accomplish just that. In your word, you state, "You shall eat the fruit of the labor of your hands, and you shall be blessed, and it shall be well with you." Lord, thank you for the millions of Americans that get up each day and work hard to feed themselves and their families. Continue to meet their needs and bless those that labor. And we ask for your guidance over our meeting this morning. These things we humbly ask in your name. Amen.
Congratulations to the lack of the United States of America. In either republic, which stands one nation under God, and the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Morning. At this time, we'll convene our commissioners' public meetings. And ask for approval of this of the previous meeting.
I'll make them. I'll say.
For side?
I.
Do they public comment on agenda items only at this time? Hey, moving on. Nikki.
Good morning.
Morning.
We had one bid due for the flood acquisition demolition project. We received two bids. Uh, the first one is.
I think it's. You didn't learn that yet? I think it's.
Bench kiss.
I got the C sign, but I'm.
Haping and excavating thirty-five thousand fifty-four dollars. Uh, the second one was Steinbacher Enterprises for twenty-seven thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe it's so bad because now that I've.
Such a.
I'm not really a linguist.
Swaykus.
What is it?
Swaykus.
Sway? All right, I would. You could give me fifteen. Yes.
I usually bet people fifty bucks on that one if they get it right.
See, you should have started with that.
I was. I was trying to think. I don't know any hockey players with that name. That's what first place. Okay. I'll just see. I have no help.
And are you mister?
No, I.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on to, uh. Reports.
Presented for your ratification or invoices due through September third, twenty twenty-five, to be paid on August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. In the amount of two million forty-five thousand six hundred sixty-two dollars and ninety-two cents. Eighty-four point three six out of the general fund, eight point six one percent out of other grants, four point five two percent out of RMS. Point five one out of escrow.
Hey, motion to accept the accounts payable. I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
All fair side?
Hi.
I.
Thank you.
Thank you. Morning.
Morning. Uh, elected official, uh, in informational items. In the sheriff's office, Skylar Corbin, Deputy Sheriff, one-one-four. Uh, full-time, twenty-three point two seven eight-nine cents per hour, eighty hours per pay period. Effective date, August twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. This was a graduation.
Okay, congratulations. Welcome to the team. Hey, we have, uh. Action items, I believe, next.
If we could audible for personnel actions to be inserted in there.
Okay. We'll go to personal actions.
Next. Approve the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment, subject to the successful completion of a background check. And all other employment conditions as outlined here in attachment A. In the prison. Danielle Losinger, licensed practical, practical nurse, pay grade ten. Full-time at thirty dollars per hour, seventy-five hours per pay period. Anticipated start date is September second, twenty twenty-five. And then in resource management services, Summer Harris, recycling laborer, pay grade four, full-time, fourteen fifty per hour. Eighty hours per pay period, anticipated start date of September eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Hey, motion accepts personnel actions.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say, but, uh, oh, that's a prisoner. It's on.
You have a question?
No, I know. I I got my answer. It was prison. I didn't see that part.
Okay. And an all fair side?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now moving on to actual items. Morning, Kate.
So we're seeking approval for our, it's actually our twenty-twenty-six agreement with forensic fluids laboratories.
Hey, motion to accept.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
Any questions or comments? Hearing an all fair side?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Answer your up. With the next three.
Good morning, commissioners. How are you?
Morning. All right, morning.
Okay, first up is, um, five point two. Do you want to probation and seeking your approval for our contract for twenty-five, twenty-six with alternative living solutions? Uh, transitional living is two seventy-four days to provide independent. Living is two seventy-four, and there's no rate increase this year.
Hey, good. Motion accepts. I'll make them up. I'll say. All fair side. Hi.
Okay, a five point three. We're seeking your approval for our twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, agreement with Clear Vision. Uh, the residential is two forty-five, eighty-two. That's a nine and a half percent increase.
Hey, motion to accept. I'll make a motion. I'll say. All fair side.
Hi.
Uh, five point four. We're asking for your approval for the twenty-five, twenty-six contract with Family United out of Muncie. Uh, that's for foster care services and transitional ages fourteen and up. Um, there's various programs, so it's different, uh, per diem. Uh, three percent increases for most, um. Down in, uh, specialized medical, those increases are three, six point four, forty percent, three percent seventeen. Um, Family United is, we keep them in our back pocket, but typically we do not use them.
Did they justify why such a large increase?
Uh, they just do the usual, you know. The price of everything is going up. We gotta pass it along.
Yeah, I.
We usually don't. We don't use them, and we definitely don't use the transitional, but when I contract. I contract for everything, so we don't have to go back through and do amendments and stuff.
Okay. Uh, motion to accept. I'll make.
I'll say.
All fair side?
Hi.
Uh, five point five. Uh, we're asking for your approval for the twenty-five, twenty-six agreement with Kids Peace. Uh, residential and foster care services, and there are no rate increases from last year.
Hey, good. Uh, motion accepts. I'll make the motion. I'll say. All fair side?
Hi.
And then the last one is five point six. We're asking for your approval for the twenty-five, twenty-six contract with Diet Co. and Family Life Services. Uh, they had four percent increases. We do contract with them. We do use them, but we never see a bill from them.
Wow, that's great. Yeah, that's nice.
Yeah, it's covered like, it's covered through MA and such, so we don't usually see a bill.
Hey, good. Uh, motion accepts. I'll make the motion. I'll say. All fair side. Hi.
Thank you, commissioners. Have a good day.
Uh, five point seven. Um, Commissioner seeking your approval to sign a professional services agreement with Integra One. In the amount of two thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and this is in our twenty-twenty-five budget.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
Oh, fair side. Hi. Thank you.
Good morning.
Where am I?
Um, first item, five point eight, vote to approve the bill itself for miscellaneous IT equipment to, um. Ikam Haitian in the amount of two thousand one hundred fifty-one dollars. So these are miscellaneous surplus equipment that we get. We put it on Minnesota bid, and he was the selective bidder.
Okay, good. Uh, motion to accept.
I'll make them up.
I'll say.
All fair side?
Hi.
The next one is, uh, the same thing as another, um, lot of surplus, uh, IT equipment, and he also bid on that. And was selected in the amount of two thousand one hundred fifty-one dollars.
Motion accepts. I'll make the motion. I'll say. All fair side?
Hi.
And then, uh, the next item, five point ten, vote to approve the agreement with NRCS. It's simply for a time extension associated with emergency watershed projects. Um, until September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. The main reason for that is that in doing some of the projects, additional work had to be done as on the watershed. Side of things that it's taken a little longer for them to complete the projects.
Is this due to the tropical storm we had?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
But no additional cost, just an extension.
Correct, right now until you get to the next one.
You're sliding one in. I see.
Oh, yeah, let me see it. Okay. And a motion accept this one.
I'll make the motion. I'll say. All fair side. Hi.
Though along those lines, as a result of some of the work that they're doing, they noticed that, um. There is a request of a hundred and twenty-three thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars and fifty cents of additional work that's needed along the. The watershed there for them to do, um, for it to really serve its purpose, to do what it needs to do properly, so it doesn't change the flow. Good news is, it's still a hundred percent grant funded, um, and being picked up by NRCS, so there's no additional cost to accounting.
Okay, that's great. The good news.
Yes.
Okay. Nikki smiles with that good news. Okay, motion accepts. I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Always. Sorry. I. Nikki's been smiling all morning. I think the, the, uh, and I don't know, maybe we need somebody from planning to answer this question. My, my only question would be is. You know, as, as we've looked at other things like our, our building costs, that, you know, we love change orders for people to make money out of them. Uh. You know, this, to me, kind of strikes me the same thing. Do we have staff in place that, that verifies?
This is.
Needs to be done, or does DEP basically?
It's DEP, and our NRCS handles all of that. They're the one that writes the scope for the work and everything, and they are the ones, and the engineer, that oversee the entire project. So this is actually not a planning project. This is a soil conservation project. So they work directly with NRCS, and they're the one then that supplies the, the funding for it as well. So they are part of the entire process.
So our conservation district people out at the farm complex would also.
Yes, they're on site. Yes, yeah. Carrie Ence is actually the person that is in charge of the project. Yep.
It would tropical storm Debbie. Have some effect on the cost of this.
Oh, yeah, certainly. Yeah, that's what this is all related to, mostly.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Moving on to the next.
The next one, five twelve, um, it's vote to approve the continuation of the grant application for the Raza and Joseph, uh, Raza and Vojio funds. From PCCD. It's in the amount of hundred and twelve thousand two hundred one dollars. This is, um, again, to offset some costs, personnel costs in the district attorney's office for victim witness services. Um, that they provide, which is a mandated service.
Maya, can you repeat that total again?
Um, one hundred twenty-two thousand two hundred one dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Okay, motion accepts. I'll make.
I'll say.
All fair side.
Hi.
Uh, the next item, five point thirteen, vote to ratify the Lake Humming County State Food Purchase Program grant application. Um, this is where the monies we pass through to the Central PA Food Bank for, um, those in need. They are doing a different process than has happened in the past. Typically, we just get an agreement and we sign it. Now they're doing it through, um, DCED. Where you have to submit a single application. So hence the reason why we had to ratify it, because they changed it mid. Um. Really mid-year, and they said they, it was due last week in order for us to get the money. So we had to submit it timely in order to get the application in.
Okay, thank you. Um, motion accepts. I'll make the motion. I'll say. All fair side?
Hi.
And then the last item I have for you is vote to approve the agreement with Health Network Laboratories, um, doing business as Forensic Pathology Associates. This is just a, um. A continual contract that we have, um, and it's not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars, and it's for the district attorney's office.
It's motion accepts. I'll make them. I'll say. All fair side. Hi. Thank you, Lynn.
All right, thank you.
Take good words, Steve.
Morning, commissioners. First one is five fifteen. Seeking your approval to the, the agreement with Icon Fire for seven thousand four hundred thirty dollars. And this involves relocating the sprinklers in the built downstairs. This building, uh, TSP. Uh, because of the new floor layout, we have to relocate the sprinklers. Um, it is not a twenty-twenty-five budgeted item, but there are funds available.
Hey, motion accepts. I'll make the motion. I'll say. All fair side.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second one is five sixteen, uh, seeking your approval to the agreement with Steinbacher Enterprises Incorporated. The amount of nine thousand two hundred fifty-three dollars. This is for the demolition and removal of all material for the six bay garage at the farm.
Okay, and that's some, thanks to the, the house we're selling.
Yeah, that's right next to the house. Yeah.
Okay.
And this is, again, this is not a budgeted twenty-twenty-five item, but there are funds available.
Yeah, and the sale of the house, uh, proceeds the house, we're gonna put that money back.
Correct.
Towards that, uh, demolition.
Yep.
When are they gonna start the driveway?
We still need to get the approval on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, all right. All right, sounds good. Uh, motion accepts.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
All fair side.
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner comments. Um. I have spent the last two weeks at Little League. Uh, and here between here and over there. And, uh, it's an honor and pleasure every year to spend time with the kids and their coaches. Parents from all over the world. And, uh. What's really neat to see is seeing kids from all over the world. Get along. And they make friends. Um, they have a language barrier, yet they communicate. They spend their time with Google Translator on their phones. And within days, they're making friends. They don't care what they look like. They don't care where they came from. They don't care that they may look different. They're there. Make friends. And have a good time. And I watched that, and then I turned on the news yesterday. And I sit there, and I think, how can? Someone have so much hatred? To stand outside of a church. And shoot through the windows at kids sitting in a pew. I don't know if you heard the nine-year-old. That spoke about. He didn't know what was going on. He was scared out of his mind. He said, "We practice this in our classrooms. We never practiced it in a church." What to do? His little friend laid on top of him. Took a bullet in his back. Protect him. A nine-year-old. Protecting him. And people say, "Yeah, you know, this is. This is the world we live in." It doesn't have to be that way. The stuff that he wrote on his ammunition. You know, six million was not enough. How disgusting of a comment. Something goes wrong between a childhood and adulthood. And as adults, we have responsibility. Do not ignore these individuals that have mental health issues. If you see any signs. Report it to the authorities. This individual suicidal. And so full of hate for such a long period of time. Someone had to recognize it. Someone had to see it. And it just breaks your heart to see the kids have to live in this kind of fear. And parents who dropped their kids off for school. After wondering, "Am I gonna be able to pick up my kid at the end of the day?" But the hatred has to stop. It has to stop. There's no words for yesterday. There's just none. It's just the lowest form. Humanity that could ever exist. Place yesterday. And yet out of that. God's love will show. It'll show in those. In that community. It'll show. You know, he took a lot yesterday from a lot of people, a lot of innocents. But he didn't destroy. Mankind. And yet, if we continue to have this kind of hatred. We're gonna destroy mankind. There's no, there's no tolerance for any of this. Mental health is so prevalent. And we can't stick our hands, heads in the sand. Because it turns into such hatred. I mean, these are in our neighbors. Just because they, they worship differently, or they look differently. You know. We're different too. You know, and, and I, I watched, we had Panama and Chapada at our Little League field. And we played the national anthem of both countries. And to see each one of those kids sing their own national anthem, know every word. The pride they had for their own country, the pride that they had in their heritage. They love their country. They love their heritage. You should. You should. And you can learn so much from each other. We need more unity. We need to help individuals that need help. We can't stick our heads in the sand. The hate has to stop. It has to. Thanks, everything.
Um, the other, I'd like to mention, since we talked about, uh. Couple items at the, at the farm complex. So we do, we have an open house coming up. Um, they're trying to do something, something new there. Uh, inviting the public, inviting, uh, farmers, inviting students. Uh, I think it's, it's an exciting time for us. We, one of the things the three of us have, have tried to do is. Is take that farm complex and really enhance what's going on there. We created a team, a, a committee of, of five local farmers that are really operating and making these decisions. Um, we're looking forward to, we, we will be selling. So if anybody looking to buy a house in Little Rock, we will be selling the house. Next to the farm, and we will have an empty lot next to that, where it'll also go up for sale for residential. Um. And with those proceeds, we will continue to invest that money just into the farm itself. Meaning getting the roof. There's some repairs that need to be done and painted, and the barn repainted, getting things cleaned up. The barn has been, been completely cleaned up. All the old, the equipment's been sold off, um, providing also some money to purchase new equipment. But again, I think it's, I don't know, you know, it's a September eight, sixteenth, eighteen, nineteen, eighteen, September eighteenth. Um, so if anybody can make it there, September eighteenth, it, it's gonna be a full, uh, first, first time. So it may not be perfect. But it, it's a start. Um, and it's a start of us showing, uh, something different than other communities have done, and then what, what we've ever done in the past with that farm complex. So I'm pretty excited that, um. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna take that to a different level. Um, but it does require a little bit of community involvement, so hopefully people show up, because if nobody shows up, they probably won't wanna do it again next year. But we're gonna try to do that. Either as a, you know, bi-annual event or an annual event. Um, so that we get some excitement out there. Um, if you've never seen that farm out there, it's, it's, it's really kind of amazing. So. It's one of the most beautiful barns, I think, that exists in Lake Humming County. Uh, so we got, we got some good excitement happening within the county. Um, you know, it is, it, it's a shame when, you know, as, as Commissioner Metzger said, you know, you got, there's so much evil out there, and it's, it's sad that that exists. But I think it starts with core values as something as simple as bring your children to that farm. Showing your children that there is a better way of life. You know, I mean, thank God, we do have Little League. Little League brings everybody together. Little League. You, you, I, I met so many nice young people over there. Um, I, I had the ability to hand out some, you know, we had a very, very limited, but we had some, uh. Lake Humming County pins to hand out. The, the kids were so excited, but they were all nice and friendly. You know, I, I, you know, I mean, and it was just nice to see that. But again, it's, it's the way we raise our kids that make the difference. And I hope that by things we're doing here as commissioners, trying to save. You know, some of the values of Lake Humming County, that the farm is one of those things that helps as well. So. Anybody that can be out there, please, please plan on attending and bring your children, you know, and see, see the, that lifestyle.
They have, they told me yesterday, we had our quarterly budget, but some had over thirty plus vendors already.
It's awesome. So anybody that didn't hear that comment, thirty vendors will be at that, uh, show and. Open house, whatever you wanna, whatever you wanna call. What are we, we're, what are we actually calling it?
I think it's farm to table night.
Farm to table night. So, you know, what, 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 just what a great. Something new. So let's please make sure we, we attend it so that it's about.
But to piggyback off that, because I was at the farm meeting yesterday. Um, you never think about it, because we just talk about Lake Humming County all the time, because that's, you know, what we are. But. Because we're the only county with a farm, there are other neighboring counties that will attend this, that want to come to this, because they just don't have the. Facility, basically, that we have. So it's just another example of us to be able to kind of show off. Part of the greatness and the uniqueness of our county. And, you know, as, I think you said it very well, as they talked about it. Like, the first one, we think it's gonna be good, but there's gonna be bugs, you know, we're trying to figure this out, but if we can turn this into a regular event. Um, it, it could be really great going forward. We think it'll be, I, it sounds like it's gonna be really good this year, and then just only to get bigger.
You know, to have thirty vendors at your first event is pretty good.
They actually have more locks on the door. They're just trying to grab logistically how they. Yeah. But I mean, just talking with that group, um, a great group.
Yeah.
So forward thinking and.
Yeah.
Community oriented, um, names that's more exciting things are coming. And so, yeah, I think it's gonna be a great asset.
We, we really, I mean, ultimately, the goal was to turn it into more educational. We, we really, I mean, ultimately, the goal is to turn it into more educational type items out there, you know, we, we got word, and, and I'll, and I'll throw it out here, and then everybody will call us, but, you know, like, when Torresville School District wanted to do some honeybee, um, whatever they call it, with, with, with that out there, and I guess they were told no, then, then this is going back years ago, so, you know, we're, we're not going to say no to things like that, because those are the things that are going to help their education programs and help kids to learn, you know, something different than picking up a gun.
Yeah, we designated a very small section of the farm open to corner, where they do the honeybees.
Yeah, hives, I guess is the word, I was like, honeybee, hives.
It's tough work.
It's tough work, so, you know, but, and, and maybe it's not just, you know, maybe it's not that, maybe it's something else somebody comes up with, you know, but hopefully it opens up to our school districts too, to, to look at this and say, what an asset we have in our county that, in our county that we can, you know, piggyback on and have some education, so, very exciting.
And, uh, we look forward to selling the house, there's a lot next to it, we're having that subdivided, so there'll be two properties back on the tax rolls and residents in the future to be at those, those sites and homes. It'll be right next to the farm.
Yeah.
All right, you have anything else, either one of you?
No, thank you.
Okay, public comment, it's time, yes. Please come up to podium and state your name, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
My name is Dove Gordon, I live at one seven two zero Almond Street in Williamsport. Um, I'm here today about the concerning billboards that have gone up in town, and I want to echo the commissioner's words about unity and, and what has happened with this shooting yesterday. As a Jewish community, we've known for several years that the violence would be spilling out of our community and into the Christian and, and other communities with this radicalization that has happened. As we saw yesterday, the shooters said, I'm going after Zionists. And we have a billboard up in our community that says, Stand for Fairness and Humanity in Palestine, the birthplace of Jesus Christ. Uh, I, I'm a scholar of Holocaust and genocide studies with a degree from Penn State and a master's from Grant's College. There are several types of genocide, one of them being cultural genocide, the erasure of a people's history. And this billboard is the effort to erase our not only Jewish history, but Christian history. And it says, in several places in the New Testament, Jesus Christ born in Judea and Bethlehem in Israel. The historical record and the biblical record both agree with this. This, these are the tactics that the radical Islamic jihadists are now using, and it's crept into our community. They are creating a false narrative, they're convincing our children that Islam is the correct, has the historical record that is correct, and the goals of these groups are to create a global caliphate led by one Islamic leader. And they know, and we now have proof that they know, in America, they're not going to achieve this through violence, right? Nine eleven was a failure. But what they now have realized is they will achieve this by targeting the youth, because our youth are so into social justice and wokeness and, and helping the minority and the oppressed, which are all great things that we all need to be doing. But who are the oppressed? And when we have terrorists victimizing themselves and convincing our youth that they are the oppressed, they are the victims, and they are the ones that need the help. And we see not only people with mental health issues that are falling for these lies, we see people with PhDs on our college campuses. We have curriculum, we have entire courses and professorships being funded from money that we've now proven has come in from the, has come from the Iranian Revolutionary Guard, the Muslim Brotherhood, Hamas. So the Israel-Palestine conflict is not just a conflict between Israel and Palestine, between Jews and radical Muslims, and I say radical Muslims because Islam is a peaceful religion, as is Judaism, as is Christianity. And your opinion about how the Netanyahu government is going about this war is completely valid, whether you're on one side or the other, it is perfectly okay to have that opinion. But to erase our history and to have this billboard in our community, especially at a time when the entire world is watching Williamsport, Pennsylvania, to me is a travesty, and I'm not sure what we, what legal avenues there are to take care of this or to fight this, but it's something that we all need to be concerned about. I know that the Jewish community is working on putting up a billboard that has factual information on it in response to these billboards. But several of these groups, as I said, they are a minority, they are well-funded, and a lot of times, they are funded by overseas organizations that have ties to terrorist groups. So if there is the ability to have an investigation into who this group is that are putting these billboards up in our town, who they are tied to, where is their funding coming from, I highly recommend that that is done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Anybody else? And also from the audience, any online?
We have one comment online from MCG. Thank you, commissioners, for speaking up about the mental illness and unacceptable hatred, many blessings.
Thank you, we've completed our agenda, so we'll be adjourned then until September the, uh, fourth. Yes, September fourth, uh, right here in this meeting room. Thank you.